All right, we'll come to order because everybody please rise so we may salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Milonazzo?
Here.
Counselor Noon? Mayor Samaras?
Yeah.
Counselor Cirillo? Counselor Conway?
Yeah.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Kennedy?
Here.
Counselor Leahy?
Here.
Counselor Mercia?
Here.
Mr. Nutter?
Here.
Mr. Decoto?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Hoey?
Here.
Mr. Lay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
All right, we're here tonight to select a candidate for the Greater Lowell Technical School Committee. We have, there were five candidates, there are now four candidates, one candidate dropped out. We're going to ask of the candidates that they've allowed them to speak for two or three minutes to tell why they want that position of school committee person for the vocational technical school. And if anybody has a clarifying question that they need to ask, they'll be allowed. So I'm going to ask the clerk to call the first candidate, and Counselor Noon is here now.
Debra Belanger.
I think we prefer, Ms. Belanger, why don't you come up?
I'm used to speaking from here.
And put, press this so you get the green light on.
Can you just press the, on? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for allowing me to be here today, Ms. Samaras, and members of the Lowell City Council and School Committee. Please allow me the opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Debra Belanger. As we all know, vocational schools are becoming a huge part of our future. Parents can send their children there and they graduate prepared to become self-sufficient adults, whether it be in the trades, the business world, or in many instances, like my son did, he went off to college and beyond. I have a real affinity for the Greater Lowell Technical High School. My husband was in the graduating class of 1977. The trade he learned helped him when he enlisted in the Navy and then returned stateside. My son Alec also graduated from the Greater Lowell Technical High School in 2000. Then he went on to Middlesex Community College, and then he earned his bachelor's degree at the University of Lowell. My son Alec is now the vice president of the Northeast Region for one of the largest national audiovisual integrators. He started his career at Greater Lowell Technical High School doing his co-op producing circuit boards. So he's traveled a long way and I couldn't be prouder. I also served on the advisory committee for the hospitality program for the Greater Lowell Technical High School for over 10 years when I was at the Convention and Visitors Bureau. I was able to work with my industry colleagues in tourism to place several of those students in paid co-op programs, and we were also able to hire two young ladies at the Greater Lowell Convention and Visitors Bureau here in Lowell. I know how important onsite experience is for these students today. Being responsible for a $1.5 million organization covering 21 towns and communities during my time at the Convention and Visitors Bureau, I also served on a number of boards and today I still do. I believe I have the experience to help move the school forward, increase partnerships with Middlesex Community College for students to take college courses, add additional advancement placement courses at the school, increase co-op opportunities, and help increase MCAS scores by giving the teachers the time and resources they need to get our kids ready for these standardized tests. They're not going away anytime soon, but we certainly can get them ready. The Greater Lowell Technical High School has not seen a woman on this board since 2006. You now have a qualified woman sitting before you willing to serve. 58.6% of the student population is made up of young men and women from diverse backgrounds. 46% of the student population being female. Who's representing them on the board? What role models do those girls have? I have four granddaughters. They are going to know that women deserve a place at the table if I have anything to do about it. My Rosa Parks has certainly come out over the last few years. Most of you know my track record in the city of Lowell. I'm a connector of people, a consensus builder, a duiker, and I have experience in working on campaigns and feel I would be really qualified to get elected when this position opens up in a year, and I think that's important because I'm sure you don't want to appoint somebody and then it doesn't follow through for the next five-year term. I live in the district, I'm willing to serve, and I ask you for your vote tonight.
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions? Thanks, Ms. Belanger, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Will the clerk please call the next?
Tanya Ford.
Tanya Ford here. Call the next.
Lee Gitcher.
Welcome, Miss Gitcher, just take a seat, please. It's on, it was on.
Sorry about that. Good evening, thank you, Ms. Samaras, City Councilor, School Committee. My name is Lee Gitcher. I thank you for this opportunity to interview and to be appointed to the Greater Lowell School Board. I'm a graduate of Greater Lowell, I graduated in 1987 from the electronics department. I still work in the field for Verizon. I'm also the IBW Union President for 2321 Telephone Workers. My father graduated also from the trade school, which was right downtown. He also taught for 30 years at Greater Lawrence as a painting and decorating teacher in the trades. My son Justin just graduated recently from Greater Lowell. So as you can see, I'm a third, three generations of trades. I think I'd be, I'm more than, I think I'm more than qualified to do this job. I work with these kids every day on job sites. I see the troubles they go through, I've actually been in that chair where they've, where they sat. It's hot, it's balancing, balancing school and the trade work. There's a great program there with Middlesex, the dual enrollment program right now, Greater Lowell has English, it's only one class, whereas at Lowell High, you can basically come out of there like my daughter did with six classes, and it's basically accepted at every state, state college. I think it's a little better than the AP program because if you test, if you test horrible, like say a three, in the AP program, the college might not accept it, whereas if you come out of the dual enrollment program, you know, state school, the college automatically accepts that class. I also, the schools, there's a lot of, and Committee Manley actually made a great motion because there's a waiting list at the school, and we have to think outside the box for this because there's, there's a lot of work out there. I know, I'm in the field. I know you guys see it, we're going to have a high school built, there's a lot of need for kids, and we're going to have to think outside the box here for the school because there's a waiting list. If we look down the road at Essex Aggie, they have a 300, 300-person waiting list. I think we're down to 60 at Greater Lowell, where in the last two years Lowell itself has expanded 140 extra kids in there. So if you look back to 2017, I think it was 1,600, we have almost 1,750 in there this year. So I think the school committee is doing a great job out there, moving in the right direction, they have a beautiful new build out there. I was fortunate to have my son going there while I got to walk through it, and it was, where there was a cafeteria, now there's science labs. It was, it was really, it's really nice out there, and I'd like to continue to go in that direction. Lowell also gives 19% of the budgets, $9 million, I would like to make sure that keeps coming back into Lowell, to make sure these kids work here, stay here. I think that's very important. Like I said, I've been in the trades, I've sat in that seat, I understand the struggles these kids go through, and I mean, I've been there, and I still see them, I see fellow graduates on job sites, and we talk about it all the time. I'm very proud to be from Greater Lowell graduate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gitcher. Clerk, please call.
Diego Leonardo.
Leonardo, welcome.
Good evening, everyone, members of the City Council and School Committee members. My name is Diego Leonardo, and I'm here because I see that there's a necessity between education and, using the words of William Allen Trotter, "Education is a greater equalizer", and I feel that we should move towards that path. My background comes back seven years ago when I came from Guatemala to the U.S., and back home I was living on a bubble where I can't have everything. It was pretty much looking at those movies in the 70s when you have the same street, everybody has the same car, your parents have professions, and everybody was living a well-known, happy family life. But coming to the States then started to realize that my dad being a general manager of an IT company, working side by side with him at McDonald's, that was not a good thing to do. So I decided to go to school, and one of the things that I understand is that education will give me the skills that I need to move forward. If I wasn't decided to go to school, then I would have still worked in minimal job work and doing just a minimal effort to get by. And I see that there's a lot of people that might not follow my steps, but they're still following through the cracks because they don't see the necessity that it's out there, and we need to educate everybody. Reason why I decided to go to Middlesex Community College, start my career in biotech, thinking that I might want to be a doctor, deciding that not only to be a doctor was a good thing, but also looking for somebody else to do that and fulfill the dream that they have. Thinking to finish my associate's degree in biotech, I was part of the commencement speaker, I was a fortunate person to give the speech in that year. What I thought, everybody, that doesn't matter where you come from, doesn't matter what you do, as long as you have a dream, follow through, because education will give you the skills and the tools that you need to do it. I had a full ride to go to Boston University where I got my bachelor's degree, and that was not enough. I decided to fund an organization that will focus on the Latino community, which is being underrepresented when, taking the data numbers, where 58% of the population in schools is minority, or from diverse background, that's when it come in hand, because one of the things that I've seen is that we need to empower the community, and how we can do that, it's by means of education. This is why I founded Lion Nets Community Center for Empowerment, where by means of education, you can activate the active participation in the workforce, civic engagement, and decision-making education, you can activate the active participation in the workforce, civic engagement, and decision-making with the purpose to promote socioeconomic development. We want people to develop, we want people to give back to the community, we want to have people that can support their family and not just having some minimum wage salaries that will go to starvation. Reason why I decided to apply to this job, because I see the necessity out there, and I see that I can bring up a different perspective from the one that we have already in the board. I can bring up different ideas, different opportunities for people that are being following through the cracks, because we seeing that education is not only the good skill that we need to succeed, but it's also the tool that give us to promote community. Given the traits that we have, we're moving to the technological era where we need a lot of the traits and skills so we can put them forward and not being just taking our jobs by robots, right, automization, we can also be better in promoting things like that. So this is why I decided to apply for this position, and I will really appreciate if you can take me in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, there are no questions, okay. We'll call the other candidate again. We're going to ask to call the other candidate again.
Tanya Ford.
All right. I need a motion to close this. So moved second by Counselor Elliott. I need a motion to take the, take a vote by Counselor Elliott and by name, and Counselor Mercia. So this will be, the clerk will call the roll, you will give the name of your candidate, and we'll go from there. Clerk?
Counselor Milonazzo.
Lee Getchere.
Counselor Noon.
Lee Getchere.
Mayor Samaris.
Lee Getchere.
Counselor Cirillo. Counselor Conway.
Lee Getchere.
Counselor Elliott.
Lee Getchere.
Counselor Kennedy.
Lee Getchere.
Counselor Leahy.
Lee Getchere.
Counselor Mercia.
Lee Getchere.
Mr. Nutter.
Lee Getchere.
Mr. Decodo.
Lee Getchere.
Ms. Doherty.
Diego Leonardo.
Mr. Hoey.
Lee Getchere.
Mr. Lay.
Lee Getchere.
Ms. Martin.
Lee Getchere.
13 for Mr. Getchere and one for Mr. Leonardo.
Congratulations, Mr. Getchere. Need a motion to adjourn? Counselor Elliott, Counselor Mercia.